To the rich and famous, thank you for talking to us today. We're talking about, uh, we have a form of five or seven.
How the plan of mission is September twenty first order. Uh, although as far as the form goes, we have six or eight, so we do have a form. Yep, join us with, uh, the pledge and the, uh, invocation. Alice will lead the invocation, but I will lead the pledge.
First, you have a lot of these things, but we have arrived at this meeting briefly. We have to talk, you know, about, still around that home, but we have to do everything we need to say in case this thing just put down there in Buckingham County and all the citizens of that town. You also saying that, amen.
Amen. A pledge, please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I guess at this time we'll discuss the, uh, business for the plan of mission and board supervisor. Nikki, do you have some comments?
Um, for the comprehensive plan or mission?
Yes.
Yes, I have a pretty thing to share for each of you just to cover exactly what we covered in July. There were only three areas, um, that we were going to take a little bit of a further look into. One being the mission's direction along major corridors and then the sole statements via our comprehensive plan. And our final discussion is not in regards to comprehensive plan, but, um, in regard to mining activities that came, um, to us in the form of a complaint in June, which I will discuss a bit further into the presentation. One area, one key area that we had lots of conversation over in July revolved around encouraging business growth along our major corridors, uh, just for ease and efficiency of small business owners and permitted activity. Uh, the statement that we have thus far is that the county should seek special districts for the main corridors of the county to be more small business friendly. This statement has been added to chapter four, policy number two, corridor development, and chapter four, policy number three, growth area village in our corridor area. Does anyone have any amendments, additions, something change, something to add or to change this statement? And our zoning district is where we would actually be much more specific. We would name the particular districts along these major corridors being fifteen, Route sixty, and Route twenty. Um, and any other that may be identified later, because remember our comprehensive plan is, is very fluid and we're able to make adjustments at any time. So, once the zoning district is updated to reflect our growth in our plan within, um, uh, growth and direction within the comprehensive plan, then we would actually name specific districts. Um, but right now, in a very simple form, this would allow us, by way of comprehensive plan, to dig a bit deeper through our zoning ordinance.
I think the, the goal in this was primarily to be more business friendly. I mean, when someone does have to wait three or four months to turn a home into a real estate office, it's, you know, we're looking to try to, at least right now, we would look at your direction at fifteen and twenty. Have some mixed uses there that won't hurt residential farm uses, but allow some of the businesses to, to be more business friendly. So that's where we would start and maybe you will want to proceed on to, to build it out into sixteen and twenty four. That, that's the goal of this, to have areas that are pretty business friendly. Right now, most of the permitted uses are pretty much from, you know, given the right one there. So, you know, if someone wants to put a hair shop somewhere in A one, then they get, go through all the costs. So that, that's, that's the goal of this, and setting the goal to be well followed for us to do.
And we could even change this if, if small business is not what we're looking for, but it could be. The county should seek special districts for the main corridors of the county to encourage business growth or small business growth, but, um, any thoughts?
A question, whether the word small needs to be in there?
That we should, um, just state business, do what you'd like to say, encourage for the, um, of the county to encourage business growth?
Or as I'm concerned, that's better.
Okay. Okay, so we will change this one statement to read, the county should seek special districts for the main corridors of the county to encourage business growth. Any further discussion in regard to that? The next area that we wanted to update and amend our, our plan was in regard to the solar statement. Um, I'm very thankful to our county attorney, Mr. Wright, because he worked very hard on the statement, um, in regards to solar. So I would like to read this to you, if you don't mind. That way, if you have any questions or concerns, I'm sure Ian is available to address those, if you'd like to make any amendments, additions, or deletions. Um, in chapter four, and he has specifically laid out where this should, um, be placed within the plan. In chapter four, policy area, policy area number nine, integration of solar energy facilities into Buckingham County. As demand for renewable energy increases, there will likely be greater interest in locating solar energy farms in Buckingham County. These facilities require large open areas to operate. The goal should be to help ensure that their compatibility with surrounding rural landscapes and uses and not diminish the tax revenue in the county. The state of Virginia is actively engaged in the promotion, citing and taxing of these facilities. Some opportunity by current legislation to afford it local government related to the citing and taxing directly and indirectly of solar energy facilities. The objective to be to use each of these opportunities to ensure compatibility with the surrounding rural landscape and enhance the revenue base for the county. Distinction should be made for individual use of solar energy to power homes and other individual facilities where the primary purpose of these small facilities is not the sale of energy. In chapter four, since the location of solar energy facilities is most likely to occur in rural agricultural forestry areas that they may also develop in other zoning districts such as industrial. There should be strong emphasis to ensure their compatibility with surrounding rural landscape and uses and to ensure that the natural resources of the county are protected and that the cultural resources are not negatively impacted. Provision should be made for individual use of solar energy to power homes and other individual facilities where the primary purpose of these small facilities is not the sale of energy. In the development of non-individual solar facilities, the following should serve as a guideline, regardless of the zoning district the development occurs. Proximity to major thoroughfares, while solar energy farms do not generate significant traffic once complete, large trucks and equipment will need to access the site during construction. Access points to adjacent roadways should be limited and developers should coordinate with VDOT to help ensure that heavy truck traffic during construction does not damage road surfaces or create unsafe traffic conditions. Proximity to power distribution lines, solar farms usually require an ability to move the generated power onto a distribution grid. Considerations should be given to the proximity and the availability of such distribution lines in order to avoid having to create new corridors, right of ways to move energy from the generating facility to the distribution network. Screening and buffering, to protect view sheds from adjacent roadways and property, solar energy farms should have significant perimeter buffers. To the extent possible, existing mature vegetation should be maintained and supplemented with native evergreen trees and trucks in a naturalistic pattern. Protection of natural resources, all natural resources should be protected during construction and after the project is completed. An environmental impact evaluation should be prepared by a third party to identify additional measures that should be implemented to protect critical environmental resources. Protection of cultural resources, appropriate buffers should be provided adjacent to any on-site cultural resources. Solar energy farms should be cited to minimize impact on views to and from historic sites. Prohibition of toxic materials, solar panels should not contain toxic materials such as cadmium and gen X. Project size, to help these projects blend into the rural landscape, each solar energy farm should be limited in size as not to create super sites. In chapter six, add a new paragraph. Land use selection, under G, strategy seven, review the zoning ordinance and amend where appropriate with regard to solar energy facilities and the objectives set forth elsewhere in this plan. In the objective, protect existing and planned uses from the encroachment of incompatible land uses. D, strategy four, develop a broad vision for what areas solar farms are appropriate and what criteria is appropriate, and then review existing ordinances to accomplish that vision. In the economic section, amend, strategy four, establish standards and criteria for developer participation in capital projects such as solar facilities and encourage their participation to offset impact to the county. Are there any thoughts or discussions that you have in regard to solar and the statement? If this is agreeable, this would be the statement that would be entered into the comprehensive plan.
Strategy four, the very last one you talked about there.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're saying, that you're looking for progress from developers?
Well, I would say that, you know, we're encouraging participation to offset the impact to the county.
But what is that other than law?
It is a law, this is one of the, you know, similar, very good section. Allow certain, in addition to the offset of certain things.
Okay, so it's no longer against the law?
Not in regard to that. If you have a sergeant in the right direction, they can economically participate in offsetting the impact of the, uh, so forth.
Such as?
Uh, you want to see the most probable right there, adding, like, to, like, out of the, of the responses, and you may, to some extent, be on it.
Thank you.
Going back, Nikki, my name, yes ma'am, to proximity to thoroughfares. Want screen back, please.
Yes, ma'am. Backing from the last, yes.
Uh, are we making that a condition? Would these condition, would these be conditions, would they make for, um?
This, this would be a guideline, while it is specific, I mean, it does state as a county, um...
Yeah, but if we make a, a guideline, then we also have to make the conditions so that it goes hand in hand, one, one with the other.
In reviewing the other solar farm conditions that have been here, of course, there are always, um, a requested VDOT plan, um, for safety and for, you know, traffic impact during the times of construction. So, this is, and what has happened in the past with the other two cases, I wouldn't say that this particular statement is any different than what has been requested in the conditions, but it does not have to be a condition. That would be something you'll... Yes, ma'am. Proximity to major thoroughfares, while solar energy farms do not generate significant traffic once complete, large trucks and equipment will need to access the site during construction. Access points to adjacent roadways should be limited and developers should coordinate with VDOT to help ensure that heavy traffic, truck traffic during construction does not damage road services or create unsafe traffic conditions.
So we would probably end up giving them a route they've got to follow during construction and not just the shortest way there.
Either.
Is that what we're saying?
We would ask for them to consult with, um, and coordinate with VDOT to ensure that traffic safety plan.
Yeah, but if you talk about damage to roads...
This is pretty specific in what the county, um, what the county's expectations would be in regard to this. I would say it would probably be hard to vary, as Alice had mentioned, from any condition that doesn't state at least this, if not more.
Any other questions about this?
I just have one question, the very last point, the proximity to the power distribution line. I bring this up because I know Pat, um, you and I have had discussions about solar farms, um, casually, um, about questions of where we can see the, um, applications increase in the county kind of morph into in regard to this. But there is also talk about, um, the distribution lines and the solar, the generating facilities being backed up with a battery facility. So would that also change the proximity to the power line, that there didn't have to be a major distribution line, that there was a utility station setup that captured just storage? Would that change this?
Well, I think economics is going to take care of the, uh, fact that those three phase spot power, I don't think we need to worry about that. Because I burn between a half million and a million dollars a mile to run three phase electricity. So I think simple economics is going to take care of that all by itself.
The, uh, battery guy, I've got the problem standing right now, you got a limit on it, I'll be the first one to that, but that's for a time when they're not transmitting. We may have, uh, like rainy day for three or four days, they store in the battery, so then they can also, during those times when the sunlight is down, they're still able to, uh, generate, well, release power, I guess.
So there's no other purpose for the battery storage.
Yeah, in other words, that line can only hold so much, and that's by control by us, but not the power company itself.
I just didn't want that to be limiting, because solar energy is grown quickly, the application bar, the programs that are involved. I just didn't want anything in our comprehensive plan to limit the development, if the county's thought of it.
Any other questions on this, on the solar staple?
The only other question that I have, um, it would be there are zoning ordinance that would further dictate the size. So I know that we've indicated super sites in here, is there any, um, thought process on what the super site is? Is that a thousand acres, is that five hundred acres, is it two thousand acres? Or is this something that we would specify in the zoning ordinance? And... Well, I would, because I know you've had, you've had inquiries. I've had inquiries up to two thousand acres here in Buckingham, so I'm curious as to the size of the super site.
What, really, two thousand acres is definitely a super site. But what, what are other localities doing, can't they set limits on that?
There, yes, I've, um, actually, last week spoke with the zoning administrator in Mecklenburg County, and theirs is a bit more specific a lot. And looking, Powhatan's is more specific, so they'll divide it into the megawatt and, and also the acreage, so, um, and I've just been blancing at other counties. But knowing that some of our phone calls, our inquiries here in Buckingham have been in the one thousand to two thousand acres, one a little bit greater than that, um... It says that we don't want to create super sites, so if anyone looks at our comprehensive plan, we may not receive those calls anymore.
Or that would be your guide to say if they did call our comprehensive plan?
That's not, that's exactly right.
They go one definition, so...
Right.
And then what are you going to include, the whole drive of land or just the land that's encompassed with, um, paths? There's a great big difference.
Well, there's a huge, I mean, the first solar farm is over two hundred acres and the panel acre, uh, acreage is eighty-two acres, which is much smaller compared to where these requests are coming in. But if we're going to have conversations with companies and possibly three application meetings, especially during this time, um, after this new legislation, this comprehensive plan is going to guide us. Uh, Mr. Wright, do you have any, um, input in regard to a super site and the size?
Is the topographical, uh, dimensions or layout of these, some of that too?
It will, depending upon, um, the layout, yes. I mean, just like the very small one that passed through here, it was on a hundred acres, they were only going to encompass thirteen acres. That had to do with the hilly nature, but that was a different request, that was a small niche solar company.
It also has to do with the, uh, smoke of the land, anything over about ten percent is unusable, um... There's a lot of criteria there, but these companies are coming up with programs now that allow them to take any piece of property and put this program to it. It'll show up, the areas that are allowed to, uh, have paths, it's incredible. In fact, I might be able to show you one.
You know, this earlier discussions with Nikki, saying we don't want to have something that's available. Our doors are open, we love you, we want you to come, but now we can't do so properly. When it's G, that open, that would be open. We're not against them, but sometimes if they think they might have part-time, it's pretty difficult to offer them more problems. We had, we met one group that, that over-bragging, you know, economic development, I suppose, you're taking away over about laws, over about names, it's different, I don't have that. But, you know, it, it leaves you a little bit, it's a state, I think, truly.
Nikki, you have the way of putting this picture up there, is there something to slide this on? Well, it's not a website.
Send the picture, email the picture.
Email it to me.
Go ahead, email. I don't want to do all that stuff, here it is, just send it to whoever wants it. That's it. I'll email it. That is an email. Forward to back to, if you see it. I'll play it in. Oh, yes. This is a piece of land that these people looked at one day, I got that back the next. When I say they looked at it, they looked at it on a tax map. That's what we do, yes, exactly.
My question to the boards is, are we going to try to narrow the scope based on the actual paint which is in panels, the, the actual, uh, size of the project? Uh, if we already sort of said that, we could have two hundred acres, possible, but you only got eighty acres of actual panels here. So is it supersized referring to the whole property or more referring to acres instead of paths?
It also can be referred to the production, the amount of energy being, uh...
I want the...
It's a friend of three and twelve.
Right, is the power grid going, power grid sort of lower than that, right?
Well, just reasonable, I think. Now, my position is, is to bring this issue as plan commission and with the board supervisor, is to keep the rural character of the, uh, county. If you lay a two thousand acres of solar panels on solar, is that in conflict with the concept of rural county? I mean, it's mine, whatever you want to go with, that's in there because I'm a rural county. And, and I actually say, you won't, it's not offensive, it's, it's area, it's all... You want a new mentality, that's fine, it doesn't affect me at all. I, I was asked to put some iron down, so it's down, and doing exactly what it's been to do, to go over the discussion, see what you want to do.
And that's a good question, Donnie asked, you know, like we lose tax revenue, we're going to put these, say, if it wasn't really, but they don't put it all, you know, but say it's two hundred acres or something, but it's not all panels, how much do we lose? Is that what I mean? Maybe we look at it as, we definitely need to fund, but not super, maybe what's to be, but buffers may be, same, probably, we do need to note that, whether we use acres just the rest, or solar panels, or, or the whole acreage.
And then work, Nikki, yeah. Sorry, and work to the acreage or the, the wattage?
Uh, so if, if, uh, they request two hundred acres, we don't use any of it, how much of it do we lose in tax revenue?
The one that's happened with the other two cases is that they requested the full parcel, which was two hundred and twelve acres, say. And then in their narrative, they said that, um, the total land disturbance would, and the panels would be on eighty-two acres, and that's how the bond was issued. The special use permit is tying up all two hundred and twelve acres. So if it were to be, you know, the other process would be up to the commissioner of the revenues office, how is assessed at that, at that point? I would imagine, I don't have any idea, is that she would utilize what was wrapped up in the... I would imagine, I don't have any idea, is that she would utilize what was wrapped up in the special use permit, which would be the entire two hundred and twelve. That all that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's real important for us in that because, you know, that's a, that's a shoe stopper for me.
Well, that also brings up the new legislation from July with the revenue per... The one, that what it is? And that, in speaking with Stephanie, while our commissioner of revenue, it was a greater chance to capture revenue through that revenue sharing versus the machinery and tools tax on each panel. She did learn those calculations, just hypothetical.
And I know that through the building permit, that's where we get money, is maybe it's figured out, circling to the panels. And as long as the application for the building permit is done in the applicant's name, that's not a power. Uh, we can charge the fee, but they'll all kind of change, say that Mr. Boone has an exit solar farm. But before they get the bill, or excuse me, put in a solar farm, before they get the building permit, Dominion takes over and it's lost, and Dominion, they probably, you know, they get charged. So, we're kind of pushing for a condition that the applicant has. They do use that permit in the right way, but they go straight to each of the panels, not the plain.
How are the panels themselves taxed right now? Everybody know? One percent, and they weren't taxed. I know in the leases, most of them state that the VC will pay all the taxes, so... They'll be taxed by some.
Typically, what happens is, it's not the panel that's taxed. Any longer you approach any model of this, you can do an income generating thing to assess the value of the property. So, plans might be considered rural property or farming or free raising, having an extra dollar. But that, if income is calculated and you project a biggest generating piece of land producing that amount of income, you have to weigh in assessment, people lot. My understanding, what they will make the comment in the conversation with Stephanie, that we never have taken it. We only just continue to assess it in the model that we destroy. We do that by...
The land? She says if it comes, she made the comments, meaning that if it comes to her attention, she will contact the assessors and they will adjust the values of the land. Yes. God, let her know that anything moving forward that had been approved for a special use permit that would be, the property would be utilized for business use, that I would let her know explicitly. Yes, ma'am. I still haven't received your email, and it could just be your cell service?
Quite possibly.
I could, huh? I can bring my stuff, funds in here. Are there any other changes or anything that you would like to do differently that's always changing? Or are you satisfied the way you did?
It's not like it's cast in stone, is it?
No, sir.
Okay, let's just accept it then. Maybe I thought, yeah.
Maybe I may have one question. It's just more house, land use sanction? Did we change?
Yeah, management strategy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we don't want you confusing.
Yes, everywhere was, land use was changed to land management strategy. Yes, sir. Thank you for your appointment. And the final information that I have for you tonight is in regard to mining activity that's taking place just off of Warminster Church Road. What I've taken from you today is the Buckingham gold property overview is from a company, which is Aston Bay Holdings. Found out in June of this year that there was gold mining activity, and it is a, an actual rig, very similar to what you'd see for a well drilling. It was based out of Georgia. The particular individuals attended that July meeting. There was David Brown and Joshua Zee, who were here for our planning commission meeting. I think they missed the joint session to discuss this mining activity. It is going to eventually encompass four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three acres. As I mentioned, they've been drilling since June of 2016. If you visit their website, it's updated from August fifth, tenth, and twenty-second, I believe, showing the amount of gold that they have found in the vein that runs through this particular area. At our July planning commission meeting, the two individuals indicated that they were wrapping up drilling, that they were done. Was contacted last week, that is not the case. They think that there's been a misunderstanding with our county, and they want to come back and resume activity. I did let them know at this point that it was not in compliance with our ordinance because we do not have any permitted use for this particular activity, and that it was prohibited. This next shot, slide actually just lets you know what their phase one twenty-twenty drilling and their phase two twenty-twenty drilling. I've put this here so that you could see the extent of the activity that they are in the midst of and what they plan for the remainder of the year because they are finding gold.
It's not like that it's property or a significant company or...
This is not household use where you're panning for gold, which is Mr. Brown, who's representative of the one particular parcel, and he works with Aston Bay as well. He had indicated that he came either a year or two ago or seven or eight years ago. We weren't able to determine that particular evening and that, you know, he said that they were just going to be looking, kicking rocks and panning for gold. That's not the activity, it's a commercial rig. It's also on Wirehouse or property. Lynn Hill and I were able to gain access to that property by way of permission of Wirehouse, and they actually took us on a tour. There's been approximately twenty-nine holes drilled. They go anywhere from eighty to three hundred feet, and they're drilled on a slant. And the core sample, I guess, oh goodness, how big is this?
Three inches, yeah.
Three inches? And within, when they pulled that, the sample out of the particular rig, you know, it's, it's about this long. They break off in sections and then they ship them to their laboratory. But they are finding, definitely finding gold there. Reason I bring this to you tonight is because in our Buckingham County zoning ordinance, in three districts, we have mining that is mentioned. In an A-one district, by way of a special use permit, we have it defined as mining and quarrying with federal and or state license. In an M-one industrial light district, we have it also requiring a special use permit, just defined as the word mining. In an M-two industrial district heavy, it's a permitted use, and we call it quarrying and mining. Most counties surrounding Buckingham have similar zoning district designations for such activity. The only county that I could find anything different was Green County, Virginia, and they offer the following. They have A-one agricultural district and C-one conservation district. They have a permitted use, which is extraction of natural resources for household use only. They have a special use permit in both of these districts for the extraction of natural resources for commercial use. And then in their M-two industrial general district, they have a special use permit requiring, which is required for natural resource extraction and processing. As I mentioned, I have had contact with them and let them know that all activity had to cease because it was not permitted. So, I'm bringing this to you because I have been contacted by the company to come back and resume activity. So, my question, the direction that I'm seeking is prohibited or permitted?
Could I comment?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're sitting here trying to open up the county's business. Here we got somebody that does, what was it, forty-two hundred acres of warehouses or cut-over property?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
Well, how would we even consider not citing them for looking for gold? In the hope that they find all they want and will come in here and apply for a mining operation?
We would be, and right now with it, in the role that I have, anytime that I receive a complaint, it is then my position to look through the ordinance to determine if this activity is permitted or if it's prohibited. If it's not listed specifically by way of right or with a special use permit, it is considered prohibited. You know, I'm trying to enforce the ordinance that we have here in the county, and I bring this to each of you tonight for guidance, guidance to move forward because we know that, I know that this particular company wants to resume this type of activity. And I understand what you're saying about the commercial growth, but at the same time, if someone has too many junk vehicles on their property, that's prohibited. So, I have to do the same thing, so I'm bringing this to you tonight to let you know what I've done and what would you like for me to do moving forward.
What do you require of us to do? Say, yeah, it's fine. What, what is required? We have to...
This would be a revision to the ordinance, and it would be a public hearing for both the planning commission and for the board supervisors.
You'd have to change zoning, wouldn't you say?
Yes, sir.
And we have to...
We would have to determine. That's exactly right, yes, ma'am.
Is warehouses, I've got a question though. Is warehouse or selling mineral rights on this project that they're, that these people want? Is that involved in the...
Wirehouse is retaining their ownership of the property. I did request from Wirehouse or a copy, just a blank copy of their agreement when they start this type of activity. They did not send that, but they did send me a statement.
Are they, are they quarrying?
No, the Division of Mineral Energy does not require at the state level any licensure until they petition them for an actual mining process.
We do have special use permit. They have mining where...
Yeah, and this is happening in an A-one. The issue is, do we allow the exploration of it? Because our zoning ordinance does not state the particular activity that they are underway right, with right now.
So, here's the whole thing. Then if we allow them to do it, then we allow everyone to do it, and they can be drilling across, starting on my property and going to Pat's property.
Exactly.
And Pat doesn't even know it.
Exactly.
Or I can hit Pat's well, never tell Pat, and one day Pat doesn't have any more water. Sorry, Pat.
But if you go, if you come up here and get ready to drill a well, you get paid three hundred dollars.
Right.
You get a permit to drill a well. These fellow men doing it free.
It's no different than planting a roadside. I mean, it's permits that you have to get from V-DOT to plant roadsides. Have a telephone pole, have an electric pole. And it's drill. You know, you just drill it under Route sixty down here.
You can't wait three feet to three hundred feet, that's your...
I don't know if it is or not. I would say operating it already, I guess. If you're drilling, we drill it.
No, that's too different.
Do we know that they have the ability to drill from one side or the other? You know, I don't think what I saw when that's where Brown came, that drilling was entirely on their own property. Is there any regulation, anything that says that you can't, that sample can go, I noticed that, and go on to somebody else's property? Put it out there.
I did not see anything specific, and like I said, it's, it's being drilled on a slant. But this, two particular parcels are right in the middle of about four thousand and some acres of Wirehouse or so. To say that it, depending, depending upon where you're located on that parcel and where they're drilling, yes, I would say it could cross the property line.
If you could go three hundred feet in, I... You're over twenty feet on my property, you can sit there and hold somebody out.
They, I asked for any specific information in regard to this project. If you go to their website, you will see where they have calculated where the vein is, how many points at which they like to drill. I mean, they do have charts and maps and graphs listed. We are, we being Buckingham, are one of two large projects in the U.S. for this particular company. I can't remember where the other one was, the Midwest, maybe Minnesota. I do know that there's also, it's funny that I found this under Green County because there's another project that's handled by a completely different company. I believe it's called Camp Resources, and that is actually happening in Green County and Madison. But this particular ordinance was not updated to reflect that, apparently had been done many years prior. So, this is in the James River District of Chairman Bryant.
Yeah, fifty-six, forty-one, five.
You turn off Route fifty-six, take a right on the Warminster Church Road. It's not even a mile down the road to the right. The other issue that we had wondered as well is that they are pulling water directly from a creek. So, while it appears, I mean, whether there are multiple drilling rigs inside of this particular parcel, I can't tell you. I know that the very first one that we came upon, they indicated that there was no one else there. But if they're pulling continuously from a creek, let's say that they go back in and there are sixty drilling rigs over this four thousand acres, and they're all pulling from the same creek. That does require a permit. And I did have a conversation with Kelly Snyder in regard to any damage and things that should assess there. But see, we don't know the scope of their project. They're just letting these people randomly do this?
Voluntary game for warehouse?
That, the monetary game and Wirehouse are in their contracts. All of those particular items are in their contract, and they would not send me a blank copy of that.
I would think that would be the first people to make sure of. I mean, they did, even though it's on a slant, they know how many horizontal feet they're covering. I'm sure they are. They're accounting it, they all enjoy.
If they're drilling with that permit, what makes you think that they're not going to drill in your land?
Well, because my land, I'd be glad if they did. I hope they found gold. But before they could mine it... Before they could mine it, which is getting it out of there, they, you would be notified. They would try to buy it, I'm sure. And once they go to drilling, building mines, then it becomes a horizontal map you can look at. Where is this mine shaft going? I know that much about it.
Our planning commission member, Ms. Formis, wanted me to read to you. She did go ahead and pull up Aston Bay's website, just to give you a bit of an overview. It says, "Drill core samples from the initial three drilled holes of phase two, which are Buckingham seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, were shipped for analysis in mid-July. The remaining four drilled holes, Buckingham twenty, twenty-one, two, and twenty-three, have now been processed or in transit to the lab. Analysis will be by standard fire assaying techniques, which will include..." Analysis will be by standard fire assessing techniques, which will include metallic screen, the saying of selected intervals with visible alteration and mineralization, including visible gold. Results are anticipated in the coming weeks. We are encouraged by these additional gold-bearing quartz being intercepts in our step-out drilling in the Buckingham veins that stated Thomas Olrex C E of Aston Bay. The twenty-twenty program has extended the strike length of the vein by a hundred and fifty miles to the southeast, as well as additional fifty miles in depth, and remains open in those directions. We look forward to following up on the results with additional work to expand both Buckingham vein and adjacent zones of disintegrating gold mineralization."
You say a hundred and fifty miles?
That's what it looks like. They also got.
I don't really think we're worried. Somebody else was laying and many, many people involved in that one.
Mickey, how many drill holes were only eighty acres, they said? I don't remember. Wasn't that a mental? On eighty some acres. Not talking about a tremendous amount of disertment. Just a core sample, that's what it amounts to. And he indicated that they weren't all on the property. They were going to be diserting in places. To find out where they claimed was there. I guess we're trying to visualize it. But I'll say this, I don't know. I don't know enough about it to try to regulate it, I guess. Something was a little, because of what, from what he, the night that he came, there was no issue with any kind of runoff. There was no issue with any kind of environmental impact at all. She was just doing that small thing from seven thousand. And then you only got a few scattered over eighty acres.
And each one of those was closed.
And then they were closed as soon as it finished. So I don't know if we're going to try to stipulate or regulate something. Probably need to get more information on. If that's, if that's the direction the planning commission and board should go by once again. But if we do this at the local level, then we're actually doing more than what the state requires? Is that about the way I'm seeing it?
That would be correct.
But it's going to be a difference between the mining and quarrying than the actual drilling. That's what we all are checking on right now.
I'm told going about the mining, but I just, I'm not sure about the quarrying because it's so minimal impact. I mean, we only got four holes of five local, eighty some acres. And in three inches, and they closed them up as soon as they pulled. I just don't know. I don't know what France says. I don't know if I have enough information to make a decision to mine them. It's a sound like it's not then what's the impact to the land?
Well, I mean, for them to do any more drilling, we're going to have to do something.
Yeah, do something. I agree. I don't know what we do.
But to me, it sounds like we just need to worry about the court, the testing, not the quarry mining part. Because they have to, they found something, like shit truck.
I guess right now, I mean, I'm assuming that there's a status quo that's enough to even go to the next step.
Gold fell a hundred dollars an ounce almost today. Standard nineteen hundred had what was it?
Just making a dollar.
They have to come to discussion. Full-fledged mine. Full-fledged mine. We allow in an A1 mining and quarrying with a special use permit. They would not have to reset it. Yes, in an A1 with a special use permit and mining and quarrying with federal and state license. So at that point, they have to petition their state license and then petition the county with a special use permit to move forward with.
So that's covered. We just want to make that up for this exploratory. Do you have a statement in there? I think what she wants to know is, what should she do? If you all want to allow this or allow this, you're going to change your.
They, last week, I have not went to the site in the last week, but last week they didn't indicate five hundred all that they want to come back into the county's person drilling again.
No, I've heard my opinion, but my opinion stays that. I just feel like we ought to welcome them back and say, I hope you find it. If you want to create a registration form or something, sure, let's do that. But, you know, they're not doing anything but hunting them. No, because if they find something, they will be down here wanting to open a gold mine. Now, I don't know if y'all have ever seen a gold mine. Have you? I've been up in Canada numerous times and seen gold mines that look like a DuPont plant. They're not little bitty things is what I'm saying. They are gigantic operations.
You don't go where it is?
I just think we allow them to do it. We allow everybody in this county.
Since in your research here for Green County, their use of the word extraction, were there any restrictions or definitions of extraction? We're assuming right now that everyone is going to drill, but that if there's some equipment that's extracted, then just pour in a drill hole. There are. And when I contacted this, I'm the administrator in Green County, he did not offer any other methods of extraction. He was not sure when the change or revision was made to the ordinance and apparently had been done many years prior. And he did not have an example of any existing mine that was there. They only had extraction, so with no definition, I'm guessing any method, whether sophisticated or crude, would be able to take place. That's exactly right. That would be my concern. You know, if someone got the federal application done, surface blast any fair next door on an A1 property, you know, doing dynamite pedal the day, they hopefully pass them up that that would be good for them.
So would you put something in the permitted side? Say it's permitted to do that, but maybe ask the question to give up some of your information on what you found?
They only, they only issue a license if the person petitions them to actually move forward with a true quarry and mine. Now, remember, when companies come forward and they only check the state requirements, that does not override local ordinances. So just because they checked with federal and state, I'm guessing that their assumption was there was nothing to do here. But we only have mining in those three districts in our zoning ordinance. We don't have anything for exploratory actions. Generally, that's what happens with other cases on mining. Well, at this point, I'd love to know that their activities are prohibited and they had to cease such activities. So I'm really relying on the direction from both the planning commission and the board supervisors at this time. So we need to revise the ordinance. Yes, so I'm sure many of you in different areas, because the complaints have come specifically from the James River District. But a couple of those have been outside of that. So if you receive phone calls as the planning commission and board for complaints for this specific activity, just want you to be aware while everyone's trying to determine how to move forward with this. That's perfectly fine. I'm more than happy to set a meeting. They can present their project scope, maybe talk about the activity. I mean, since it's not permitted in the zoning ordinance and we must respond to the complainants that we find activity that there's no use for, that's what brings us to where we are tonight.
I think we need a plan to move forward one way or the other. I don't think it's fair to just tell them, no, you can't do it after they've already got time, money, and energy invested in this project. We need to tell them something other than come back and explain to us again because what is there to explain? It's telling you what he's doing. Why has it bothered everybody so much?
Because it's not permitted. So when the activity is not permitted and we have no definition and no use for this, then we have to uphold the ordinance. I mean, otherwise, you'd be able to do anything you wanted anywhere you want.
I understand that, but if it's not prohibited, how are you getting that it is prohibited? Because it's not allowed?
Because it's not permitted and it's prohibited.
That's one of those things nobody would have ever thought of in five hundred years when you're allowing or trying to wipe down what's allowed in a district.
This is probably our first experience with this. We're not in the Midwest. We haven't had active mines prior, but we are where we kind of are with the situation now. So we would need to make the best determination as to how this fits or if it doesn't fit.
Well, you know, the next thing, I mean, let's be honest, fracking is very popular these days. And that could start anytime.
Ashley, what was your comment about extraction?
What methods or processes will be allowed for extraction? Is it just going to be drilling at this point or should we further define what methods of extraction are allowed?
But if we use the term extraction of natural resources for household use only that they, with a special use permit, then they can apply for a special use permit and just quarrying.
Definitely didn't find that correctly. Otherwise, I'd say a dynamite in my backyard and we'll go about.
But we confuse an extraction with testing core samples. That's all these people are doing is getting core samples.
I think that one determination comes from the extraction and the usage thereof. We have household use only, which may be extraction as we go to our creek or we take some little boring tool that goes two feet on our property because, oh my goodness, maybe we have gold. Or the commercial usage. So if I say I live in an A1 and that gold vein used to run through my property on an A1 and I'm going to contact Logan Drilling out of Georgia, it's no longer my household use. It is, I have entered into a commercial contract to heavily explore that particular parcel. So it's probably not necessarily, yes, it can, we probably should make determinations in regards to the methods of extraction. But is it for household use or is this for commercial use? It's clearly for commercial use with Aston Bay on the property that's listed on their project overview. And I believe Mr. Matthews had a question. And, you know, I've never had a complaint for the extraction or people painting in their creek. I might be giving them tomorrow. And they just paint in the creek. That's, that's just. Well, we don't, the activity is not defined in the zoning ordinance. It doesn't go down the. They're not doing it now because they're not doing it. But they, according to the calculations that Lynn and I had calculated, that run, they weren't taking over the ten thousand gallons. But if they have thirty rigs set on three thousand acres and they're all pulling from the same creek, cumulatively, they could be required.
That's not the way it works. That's not the way it works, Mickey. They don't have thirty rigs. They got one rig that digs thirty holes.
Pat, I don't know that they couldn't have thirty rigs. They're small and if they found enough gold, they probably could bring in thirty in over five thousand acres. Unless I had an airplane or a drone, I would not have a clue. I'm here tonight just to determine, is it prohibited or is it permitted? I have let this particular company know that they cannot move forward. We don't have a definition for it. And when they come in and they don't, and they're, and this comes to our attention, we don't even have any idea of what their overview is. So if they were an economic development prospect, we typically want to know what that overview of their company is so that we can, you know, work through that expansion with them. But I mean, I don't know. I can't say that they're only going to have one rig. You can't say that they are going to have thirty or sixty rigs, to be honest with you.
It is the policymakers for mining. They want to allow this or not, or not allow, and if they do allow it, if they want to allow the conditions.
So you want to put it in as a permitted, I mean, not permitted, but a special use.
Like in places like this, definitely.
You know, as far as I'm concerned, if we had passed an ordinance or whatever it requires, that they got to come in here and tell us, we are such and such a company, we're going to be up here on this three hundred acres, four thousand acres, ten thousand acres. We're going to be drilling test holes, getting core samples, building the holes from the leaf and soil. I mean, I think that's all that should be required. If you want to charge a hundred dollars to sign a piece of paper of what they're doing, that'd be my thoughts on it. Because I don't see it as doing one bit of harm to anything. In fact, we're sitting here telling ourselves we want business, but yet we're trying to cut it out. I mean, that'd be like going out there and building a separate tank without getting soil samples. They're not going to do it.
I'm not, I'm not saying that don't do it. I'm just saying, let us.
I'm just saying, let us know what you're doing so that we know that you're not infringing on somebody else's property.
Well, you know it. If you're 200 feet below your property line, are you still on your property? Think about it now before you answer, because the same thing goes up. Do you own the air 200 feet above your house?
No, they haven't.
The courts can't decide on that one. Because when you get into soil, you got shadows. The shadows cast a long ways. So, you know, the biggest thing they've decided so far is that everybody's on his own now. So, whether or not you own the land, it's member rights anyway. But who owns the land or what's down there 200 feet below your property line? I don't know the answer.
Yes, you have to own the people they will support.
Yes, and we have to make it so they're protected, aren't we?
I agree that these people that came before us are pretty harmless. My worry would be if we amended the ordinance, assuming that all of those people are nice guys, that the companies in the county, you know, the next person that's coming in comes in or are not so kind to your environment, they don't care about our, our agenda, it's out of control. They're not going to fill those holes with concrete.
Yes, they are. They've got to, don't they? I think that's the law. They've got to fill those holes.
It's not illegal to, you know.
If they're not, they're not, they're not operating anything other than their own operating license or they have nothing from the state. They won't give anything until they apply for a, not a license.
She's got interest.
Well, I think, you know, what Nikki's saying is, you could, they could do this for us, like we go up and handle church, but she has people telling us that we're allowing something that's not permitted. She gets those calls. That's her great squad. We're not doing it. But I think she wants you all to know why she's told them.
So, we just need to amend our ordinance to allow them to get a special use permit for sampling.
So, right now, is there a consensus that this is a, that's prohibited? They'll continue to cease activity while we work towards revising the zoning ordinance?
Is that fair to do to them that way? And they've been up here doing the work.
116.
And if they, you know, if they've got these 30 cranes you're talking about coming in, drilling rigs all over, and they're supposed to arrive next week, that's going to get rather expensive on somebody's payroll.
So, what you're saying, Pat, is it's better to do it and then ask for forgiveness than to seek permission?
Well, sometimes that's the case.
Well, it's not the case here.
But she told them they couldn't.
She's already told them, "Don't do it." So, if you continue to do it, that's on you. She told them to stop. So, it's prohibited.
I mean, you could just go ahead and put it on a permitted side. It wouldn't be wrong.
You mean with a special use permit?
No, I just said the permitted side. Permitted side is means that you're an A1, you can do drilling testing. But if you want to do the coring and mining, you have to go into the special use permit.
Well, that, yeah, that definitely ought to be the case.
I mean, that's, that's. The special use permit is our app for the coring and mining. Any federal and state license. Right now, she's saying she don't have nothing that tells her that it's okay to tell them to go ahead and drill. If nobody hears or heard them drilling other than across the property line, we can say that it's a permitted use. So, go ahead and do it. But we have to still have a meeting and have these.
It's permitted use, but they would have to reach.
You can make them register and, and ask for certain information for them after you do.
So, that would bring up something else. We have lots of companies that want to register here to do certain types of work, but we don't require our business to register. So, I mean, that brings up something else that we want to cover for another night.
I'm just saying, which way are you going to go? Do you think your drilling will be okay if you do it? Or do you think it'll not be done by the, by the, that's the opposite. Maybe that's what we have to do, is actually. Yeah, you're an A. Let's move on.
Well, no, we don't think we'll have, I'll be first to vote. Might be a big advantage there.
But if you have a special use permit, then you can, you can control the conditions for what they do. I mean, that's my, that's my only thing. If, if I say, "Yeah, sure, in an A1, you can drill all you want", and Danny drills across and hits my, my well or damages my, I don't know, whatever, okay? It doesn't say anything, I'm out. Okay? But if you put a special use permit in that says you are not to go on someone else's property, then that protects if something gets damaged on your property. That, that's my only thing, rather than giving somebody a blank check to drill. I mean, I'm all for drilling land. I don't like you, Pat, for it. If, if they do it right, good. I mean, it's going to open it up for us. But do it, do it right and protect other people. Because who's to say, you're right, Pat, you know, this company may be only up and up, but who's to say that, sorry, Johnny? Let's say Johnny's company comes in here and he says, "Yeah, it's not illegal to you to get caught." So, we, we control the conditions.
Do you want to give my grandfather a special use permit? Say they go ahead and do it now? We're working on what we really need to do.
I think that would probably be the fairest thing to do. It's not the life we can do.
You can give them.
I mean, I've been on a position, you know, in a position where work has been ordered and equipment is on the job and suddenly go in and pull some little fancy car over the hat and all you get to do is pay the interest on the money you borrowed and all the equipment that's sitting there until this stuff goes away. And I can't help but feel sorry for them.
When you're going to stop and then you bring equipment in.
Uh-uh, that's not what happened.
I mean, that's what's going to happen now. So, then, then, oh, yeah, look how I got over on Buckham County.
Our equipment already is, they spent a lot to come back.
That's what they want to do, but of course, I've already sent the email to the CEO letting them know that it was not permitted. That happened over a month ago. And when they showed up in July, they said they were no longer going to drill. That has not been the case. They now want to go back and drill again. And I've let them know it's still not permitted in Buckham County and that there was a joint work session, that there possibly could be a determination of how to move forward. But as of right now, the activity was not permitted in our county. Is that the same decision that the board and the planning commission feels?
You can have it under, so that we can think you can have it to permit. That they provide the site or the site that they're doing it also. Or they just not do it on half the property. Like a building permit, but. That's what you have the information, you know they're there, they're working, but it don't have to go through board and planning.
Just a permit to extract.
And they would have to give you a site plan.
Just for testing.
Yeah, for testing, they give you a site plan. That way you know who didn't do it up there. And they, you know, permit saying that they.
And there's a, a permit and a permit fee.
And I wonder if we, wait a minute, I don't think they can do that. And I, I think, that's why I don't think we charge, we, that's the state. After all, it's a special use permit. That would be ideal to do that, but I think we have to. It's could be a million. Not department charged.
Really, you're talking good.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion that allows core samples. We have a constitution on it, but we have a special use permit. How to get that, to do the core sample. I would like, if this is the case, if possible, to expedite a little quicker. So, we would have a joint hearing in five, six, four, two, one.
Be two months to the fore.
You have a second?
Sorry.
You have a first and a second on the motion of, uh, allow these people to vote forward with an expedited, uh, hearing. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hands.
Yes, before we vote, the ordinance would have to be revised as well, adding this particular mining activity, however we're going to determine the definition.
Text amendment.
Text amendment.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I wrote it down, but I didn't get the text amendment part, so I apologize.
I don't know if special use is, is it?
Yeah, it's, it's. When you're done handing them.
Right.
We adding a zoning text amendment to the list of special use permits?
If each of that is special use, then that way you have to control over it. I, it's, it's not a bad idea, because you don't, we discussed, we seem very grateful. We don't know what the next one is.
Do you distinguish between commercial and council also?
I don't see the need for that, although you have special use. You know, there's quite a lot of that time.
Well, me as a landowner, if I don't want to strike my own, would that be, you know, I have to also get a special to, to, to.
No, this is not the individual, but you would have a, you'd have any, I would, if you allow the quote. But, you know, you can vote for five minutes to mark it. That may be a way to discuss it.
So, we're going to add a zoning text amendment to the list of S U Ps in an A1 zoning district to allow core samples for commercial use only? I think that's how you worded it.
I think I probably gave this restricted, it's possible, but also allow them to do it.
Do we need to vote again? I don't think it's changed yet.
We do.
Yeah.
So, the planning commission wants to add a zoning text amendment to a list of special use permitted items in an A1 zoning district to allow core samples for commercial use only by way of S U P.
So, vote. I'll vote.
Motion been made in a second.
All right. I've all heard the motion, uh, been made in a second, uh, the special order. All for the vote again.
Right.
Raise your hand. Bring them up.
Yes.
What did Karen have done yet? You need a committee to, or you don't want to shut up?
Nikki, you had the suggestion?
Do we have enough time to get it to October?
So, the October 20th is the work session for the planning commission. So, I'm trying to think, yes, for October 13th. We already have a public hearing on the noise control. We have a public hearing on the transcript, so. October 13th, we want this. Seven?
I can't even hear.
All right.
Did we do it? They don't set the public hearing for the board of supervisors meeting and the planning commission is going to show they are going to do a joint or just the board of supervisors? I'm sorry.
We all just heard, second, that was public hearing. May have come over that.
But then that would mean, that would give our, that would give these guys time enough for that. Because if, if we hold a public hearing for October 13th and we, we do hear the public input and let's say hypothetically it's approved, then it's moving forward, then they get a special use permit. But if not, we got to wait until we're ready.
Well, you're adding, you're, you'll be adding special use, and they've got to be. They still will have choices.
Well, thank you all. I kind of want to do a sound relation and pan.
We have time to advertise. We can get in this week, so we'll move forward then with holding the public hearing on October 13th, regularly scheduled, board supervisors meeting. So, vote for this response.
I want to make sure that we have a public hearing on, on October 13th. All for the vote. Going down, skirt.
If we want, we give back the test bill so they can get their act together to do that S U P, you know, put it.
Yes, ma'am. I'll let them know today. We'll go and contact them tomorrow. So, we can have.
Right, that's, that's, we'll be back. We got to get that written up this week, but we have to get it this week. We'll have to do it regular, either Friday. We're waiting for Friday.
We actually have it tomorrow. Well, you're off the hook with me. I've kept you long enough. That's actually the end of all matters from the planning commission. For me, anyway, it's only the industry.
We have the other planning commission matters.
I got some, yeah. I got something quick that I'd like to, Brian, this board, really directed at the board of supervisors. Some months ago, I brought up an issue that was, I was dealing with. But it is a county issue. We have a gray area, basically. And what it is, my daughter was getting married, she got married three weeks ago. And we know, the county does not have a, maybe you've done some research today, special, like event, like, so then I. So anyhow, what the situation was, a company that we were dealing with was going to put our tents up. They, because of liability insurance, they had to find out whether the county required a building permit. That, that was part of our insurance. Alright, so they were told they did have to have a building permit, no problem, no issue to that. Couldn't quite understand it because it's a tent going up, stays up three, four days, that's common. Anyhow, the cost of that was quite high, uh, we, and because of COVID. My daughter's weight was reduced about, down, I don't know, it was probably, something from seventy-five hundred people. Anyhow, we still pay three hundred some dollars because the building permit is based on a stick built permit building. So other counties have a designation where it's, you know, maybe fifty dollars, seventy-five, a hundred. Anyhow, I think that needs to be addressed because, one. Not so much my situation, while I've got another friend, they're having, their daughter's getting married and about next Saturday, it's the Saturday following. They got a larger tent that's going to be put up, you know, just in protection of people with it. I forgot what her cost is, but it's somewhere over five hundred dollars, and this is just to have a tent put up a building. So I'd like to ask the board supervisors to think about establishing a fund or a designation for these because. As the county grows, and you get festivals hopefully coming in. It, you know, it looks sort of bad if you got, you go, say, well, listen, I want to put a tent up for this benefit, and the tent's gone, you know, your building is five hundred dollars. What, you know, that doesn't look too good on the count.
I just brought that up, Johnny, because I actually got it in on my desk, breaking the board next meeting. We did a little research, especially with the second application. And the, the, the code doesn't require you to have one after a certain size, which is fine. But because Tommy didn't have a plea established. He was charged in square footage of home. Which, I guess he didn't have a guidance, so what I was going to be asking, which would not require public hearing, because we have these schedules. That you would set a certain fifty dollar inspection fee.
Right.
Uh, with cost, all the ones that are certain size. Anything over nine hundred. I don't want none above.
Well, I think the man should have been reimbursed. Who, who you paid?
And Tommy said that's checked, make sure they got that.
And we have no problem with that, and I know we didn't, there was no guidance there, and it's sort of a gray area, but.
It was a shock, because you are, we've never had a permit for a tent.
But, Nikki, you said you checked, I, I checked with the land, it's a couple of them, I looked like fifty, seventy-five, maybe a hundred dollars.
I looked at Nelson and, uh, Fugan, we looked at Almar, because they require a couple of extra things because of the fire marshal, but it was a, um, a set. Temporary tent permit fee.
Right.
How long do you make that?
Fifty to a hundred dollars, one may have been two hundred with the fire marshal inspecting it, but it was not based upon square footage of the same amount. Would you have caused to build a permanent structure of that size.
Did you pay ten, you're not, you're not? Yeah, I checked, so it was anywhere from fifty to a hundred.
What do you think?
Oh, I, I think I'd have overall three hundred dollars.
I think it's.
We're smaller. And yours was smaller than that.
Right, hers is even longer.
His first was going to be.
Yeah, well, well, we're trying to reimburse you ten fifty, keep fifty.
I'll write it.
Well, I guess it's like, like you said, you're going to have to establish, uh, I guess, whatever you want to call it, a special.
I think that, that it, like we have a building permit fee, that would make.
Right.
Establish the fee. And, uh. Well, and that thing that you're getting into, you're zoning dance.
Wouldn't sell the.
We have, we have special.
Wouldn't there be so many other designations on the county?
One was just called tent permit fee, the other one was, um, temporary tent permit fee, they basically were tent permits. So anything regarding that temporary structure, but I think they were just referred to as a tent permit. And it did indicate that they had to, um, follow the code over a certain number of people that could be covered by the tent, that they had a flat tent permit fee.
And state have a regulation going up. If state have a regulation going up, then it can be done.
That's right, and that's where the building code portion, um, comes in, but I think the county has the ability to set the fee.
They can set the fee. But we do not have a fee. So Tommy charged the square footage of home.
Special. For.
We not have.
Be careful of any word you think, Nikki, you don't want to, in French, on Jan River Park up there, people think they got to pay to have that bitch a tent out there.
They pay a lot more than that fee to pitch this in up there, trust me.
No, you don't want to think the additional fee plus.
We could just say what it'd be to state, to state that they're paying you up.
Um, right.
That's all I have, Chair. Okay, has anybody else have any concerns for the commission?
I take one question. Y'all consider changing time practice six o'clock?
Did you stop at your regular meeting, change your regular meetings back to six o'clock, like four, two, uh, other than seven, right?
Joint meeting.
You just have to change your, uh.
For the joint meetings, you mean?
Well, yeah, I guess for joint meetings, all you can do for all meetings, whatever.
I'd, I'd be happy with joint meetings at six.
Right, we can do that, but I think we've got a few members on here that have talked out, making it to seven.
Okay. Joint meetings at six.
That's fine.
I agree with that.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Tommy, I guess. You can set it for a special, for a work session, you can set it.
Each meeting, set it up.
You got a long session. I think your bylaws.
Okay.
So is that necessary going on, Nikki, is that what you're trying?
The recommendation has been that if we're going to have a joint work session, we can change the time to make it more suitable for the, for supervisors, if, if you guys see that. But in order to change the meeting times for the planning commission, it has to be required to change to the bylaws. So. It's a bit.
It's a regulation. I think that's.
Right.
But if it's your work session.
Well, I'm trying to get the same people here.
If it's, if it doesn't have it in there.
See, that, that would be, you can see. Did you, and now people listen to you, I know that's settled, I did like.
I guess I'm looking for a, a question, Chair. All in favor, raise your hand. unanimous, we are a jury.
Mr. Chairman, now moving, we go into executive clause session under section two point two dash three seven one one. Eight dot three, special consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose. Or disposition of public property held real property where discussion is open meeting. Would that personally affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public buyer?
I think that all, I think most of us all, going to executive session. Make a second on that. Second. All in favor, raise your hand. All in favor of the executive session.
Goodbye, planning commission.
Jay, okay.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, ma'am.
We have.
This Chairman, I move we return to open session and certification that the rest of each board members knowledge. Only business matters related to the code of which the executive meeting was convened, was discussed or considered in the closed executive session.
Sorry.
No sir.
Okay. And most of the jury.
I heard.
The jury. All the people.